Call to order, the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Could we take attendance, please?
Sure. Chris Kuskoros.
Here.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Goldberg.
Here.
Peter Boynton.
Aye.
And Gemma Wilkins is not able to attend tonight.
Okay.
I also want to take the opportunity to introduce Zach Melcher. Zach's our new staff planner. He started a week ago Monday. He won't necessarily be stepping the board, but I certainly wanted to do an introduction and he'll attend as his schedule allows.
Fantastic, welcome Zach.
Zach, you're from the Chicago area? What were the sports affiliations? This is a test? Okay.
It's okay, it'd be different.
And it's not the Eagles, right?
Right. I feel like Chicago fans are just as downtrodden as Philly fans, so I think I can misericordia. Okay. One eighty-nine Willow Street, they asked for continuous until October third. That's fine, we'll continue until October third, but...
That's it.
Yeah, after that, either we should withdraw it, or we need to know if something's gonna happen with that.
So that's what I suggested. I spoke with Amy Maxner, the Conservation Administrator, today and asked her expectation for September twenty-seventh, because that's when they would do back to her. She hasn't received anything, and the deadline was yesterday. So I suggested that the board may want to withdraw. If you do request the withdrawal, technically, to be before conservation, they have to have applied for all other permits. And so that's just a little gray area. If they withdraw from us, then they haven't applied. But we'll work that out between now and then.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Zero Turnpike Street, Middleton Farms LLC application for site plan review special permit, Article eight supplemental regulations. Applicant proposes redevelopment of the property consisting of the raising of all existing structures. Construction of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-three square foot industrial building that encompasses the towns of North Andover and Middleton. The construction of new access drive located in Middleton. Construction of all associated parking areas, stormwater management structures, septic system located in Milton. Utility installations and construction of a fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty... Three... Fourteen thousand three hundred and three square foot outdoor storage yard located in Milton. The project is located with industrial one zoning district. Continue public hearing. Gene, why don't you tell us what's been done in the interim since where we've had it before us? And then what we're planning to do today?
Yep, so as you know, it's been before you for quite some time. The hearing opened November first of this past year. And the applicants have more recently submitted responses in June and July. And so all civil, stormwater, zoning bylaw, and traffic pair reviews are complete. North Andover Fire Department's site plan comments have been addressed. Fire protection plans will be reviewed and approved as part of the construction drawings submitted with the building permit application. Currently, a water supply delivery agreement has not been established. I've... A draft decision via consideration which conditions water supply for both domestic and fire suppression be designed and approved by NAFire, NADPW, and Middleton Water Department prior to any land disturbance. Evidence of the approval design by all three parties will need to be provided to the plan department. If an agreement has not been achieved by the time they want to apply for a building permit, the applicant shall file for a modification to site plan review in accordance with revisions to approved site plans. And so they need to pivot to either a well or some other means of providing water for both fire suppression and domestic.
Okay. So we... Traffic has been examined and peer reviewed, correct?
Yep.
Stormwater's been examined and peer reviewed. I don't believe... I don't remember any outstanding comments from the butters that have... There was some initial, when we first started, comments about screening and noise. And as far as I can tell, those have all been addressed. And the only thing outstanding is there's no agreement as to where the water's gonna come from for each building. And so that's a condition. And they're also gonna have to get a highway access permit, right?
Yep, MAST DOT permit. And again, in the decision, I explicitly state that the water design shown on these plans is not likely to be constructed in that manner. And so that, because we're referencing these as part of the decision, I want to be explicit that what's shown as the water line coming from Middleton has not been approved and likely will not be the design. Middleton feeding a North Andover water supply.
Okay. And there was a... Fire departments were gonna meet, both fire departments determine, you know, if there's a call, who goes where. That's all been settled?
Yep. He's satisfied some of those decisions will be made as part of the construction drawings. So he's satisfied with what he responded... What he received. However, those meetings were conducted under the belief that Middleton was gonna supply this water. And it's since been understood it is not going to be supplied in that manner. And so that's why I included them on the sign-off of the adequate water supply prior to land disturbance. Because obviously, the water supply... The magnitude of it is more for fire suppression and feeding the hydrants because of the pressure needed to supply that water. The uses are pretty de minimis in terms of how much water will be used. And so a well likely would be able to satisfy domestic. But the fire suppression is a different story.
Okay. Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Anything you wanna add?
No, I mean, that basically rounds it up. I mean, I personally am trying to assert with regard to both town administrators that there's a mutual aid agreement between the towns of North Reading, pardon me, North Andover and Middleton for mutual aid for police and fire. So as you well know, if there's a fire burning in, for example, Nomad across the street, doesn't matter where the water's coming from, which hydrant it comes from, they're going to fight it. And that's because there is a statute and agreement between the two towns. So I personally am asserting that no matter what, you know, whether Middleton provides it or not, that should be appropriate because hopefully, likelihood of ever having to access the hydrants or sprinkler systems is unlikely. Impotable water is, I mean, maybe two thousand gallons a day, and I don't even think it's that high. It's just that's what Title V would demand. That being said, we are still working with both towns because there is some ability to provide a public benefit to both towns if we can actually form some sort of a connection. And my client is more than willing to investigate and to provide benefit to both communities. That isn't an issue, and we continue to work toward that. We did... You did ask me last time, Mr. Goldberg, to provide for you some perspectives, just so you'd know. Even though the butters truly have said, okay, we like the fact that you're putting in the fence, et cetera. I thought it'd be good just to continue to follow up and provide you with those perspectives.
Fantastic.
In addition to that, I... Oh, here we go. So we're just coming, you know, we're obviously driving down the street. I think this is going toward Middleton, isn't it?
Driving west.
It's up the hill?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's toward Middleton.
That should be a bit toward.
North Andover is what I meant. Gee, gee.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's one view. What I did was I tried to grab each perspective and then show you on the plan where I shot it. So maybe if you just go through, they can kind of see where the architect drew it, because clearly, we had to draw on it. So this is the view from the street coming from North Andover going to Middleton. And what that's showing you is just that residential structure. Because abutting the... Basically, about abutting this property is that parking field and then some storm water. So then the next one. So here you go. So I showed perspectives going around the complete building as you had requested. What I did ask the architect to do was give you a perspective, not just from the floor, but also from up, because I wanted you to see both perspectives. So as you can see, there are two residential buildings in the North Andover side, and you can see them outlined in green. And we shot from the building that's behind one of those perspectives, too. That's where you see the perspective coming out in the very bottom. So I believe that's perspective one. So you have all of them on that side. And then on the other side of the property, we have a perspective showing it from the residential building that's in Middleton. And then there are industrial buildings at the top, also in green. And then we show you from the street view. So I just gave you an overhead to give you an understanding of how already vegetated the boundaries are between the properties, because many of them aren't going to be impacted because, number one, they're not our property, because of the way the property goes. So you can see how the property's sort of like a, almost a triangle. Well, between the triangle in the residential where you have that hook, that isn't even that property. That property is really belongs to the condominium, so that green will essentially remain. So then, we keep going. And we're just giving you, again, another perspective of where the buildings sit and the parking, and then where all the buildings are on the adjacent site. This is just giving you the Middleton perspective. That's that industrial building that abuts on the eastern side. So here we go. So this is the view from those industrial buildings in Middleton, and you can... Or from one fourteen, and that's the back of the industrial buildings. And this is what somebody would see coming down one fourteen. This is the view from one of the balconies. It's just, there're gonna be trees, there're already existing mature trees. And then we are proposing trees that are gonna be planted ten feet on center. The original plan, it showed fifteen feet or twenty feet on center. And I personally requested that the developer increase the number to do ten on center, because that's more appropriate for a screening. So that's what we did, and we actually gave you that revised plan. Because when the engineer resubmitted the plan and I had submitted them to Ms. Enright, he had forgotten to make that change. So here's the view from the ground. The ground floors, you can't see anything from any perspective, and you can see that. And we do have an eight-foot tall fence. And when I say eight feet tall, I do not mean measuring from where the ground is up to the top of the fence. I mean, the solid portion of the fence will be eight feet tall. That's important, because I noticed, and so did Ms. Enright, because we just talked about it this morning, not this morning, this afternoon now, that the plan had shown six feet, but eight feet with the total. And I have that plan revised in your file, so that the approved plans show an eight-foot solid portion of the fence. And this is the perspective shown from, if you're actually on the ground in front of all the landscaping, basically, then you can see the building and the fence doesn't block very much. This is the view coming down one fourteen. We can't really... Okay, and here you go. This is one of the views. You can't see the fence from here, because you're so high up in the buildings, because it's... I mean, I think it's a forty-something-foot-tall building. So you can clearly see the backs of the building. And that was from the building that was behind, that you can barely see on the prospect... On the site plan. And when we designate the perspectives. This is the same thing. This is one of the buildings that's on the side. That... The second building, like, right back, right back here, looking over. And again, they're shown on the perspectives. And this is from the ground. You really can't see the buildings from the ground. There's... The trees are just too mature, and the fence blocks.
Okay.
And I think that that actually is it.
So just a question.
Please.
Thank you for all the effort and thought you put into it. Have the people that lived in the building seen these plans?
They have not come to any meetings, and they... We keep presenting, and they... The thing they cared about, truly, was the fence. So when we were here, when the meeting is, and we had a meeting with them and the developer, what they wanted was an eight-foot-tall fence that would actually act as a barrier for street-level activity. They really weren't concerned about looking at the tops of the buildings. They were more concerned about truck activity in the bottom. So once we put up the eight-foot-tall fence, they essentially were done.
I guess, Gene, my only thought is...
Yep.
I think you're right. I mean, they haven't shown up, and they certainly have a prerogative to show up. But we ought to have some look back in the decision, so that after it's done, if it just turns out to be a little bit different than we thought, we're gonna have the right for some level of additional screening, if reasonable.
Absolutely. If there were complaints from the residential butters and they wanted additional screening, we most certainly would provide it.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I couldn't agree more.
I think is really what it comes down to, so.
And also, sometimes, like, you're right. You know, you get in there and you start operating, and somebody's like, look, we just need one more tree there. Absolutely. We'll work with Ms. Enright's department, and to the extent they have comments, we'll follow up with the board and Ms. Enright.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Any public comment received via email, Gene?
No.
Is there any members of the public here that would like to make any comments or have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. In that case, why don't we... Why don't we review the draft decision? And then, after that, we'll close the public hearing and then have a vote. Oh, actually, I did have a question.
Please.
Are you still before boards in Middleton?
We are closing tomorrow night.
Okay. So you're looking for our approval tonight, then? So if it's approved, and if the plans are changed or approved in any different manner in Middleton, you'd have to come back either with a minor modification or a modification, depending on how... Hopefully, it's the same approved plan that's approved, but if something's different, you'd have to come back. We can't have two approved plans that are different.
We... The only changes that we had to make for the Middleton side was exactly what you have in front of you. These I added because I thought it was my obligation to add, and then the fence detail was my obligation to add, and it hadn't been done by the engineer. The thing, though, that Middleton wanted added, which are in those three sets of plans, are... What are they called? Vehicle stops, wheel stops. So there weren't any in front of this building on the Andover... North Andover side. We have a sidewalk on this side. Because of the type of building, there wasn't anything. So we were asked to put those wheel stops, vehicle stops in. So that's the only change, and that's part of the plans that you have.
Jill, can you just explain the turnaround that got added to the drive aisle between the buildings at the fire department's request? I don't think this was explained. It's certainly in the plan set, but I don't think you heard it.
Right. This was a direct result from the fire department. So Pete, do you want to... May I ask the engineer to come up, please?
Do you want to see the actual turn, or just want to see the...
Just describe the turnaround and how you were proposing it for the fire department.
Oh, sure. Oh, these are... These are the wheel stops that Jill just described. There's nine of them, so just bear with me for one minute.
I think they just need the one where you show it right there.
Yeah.
This is the... They're talking about this one, Chris. So we cut out a portion of the building to make it so that the truck could come in and turn around, but I figure Pete would be better off to...
So yes, we cut out a portion of the building. If I can find it, there it is. Okay. So it's widened up between the buildings, about eight feet. So by doing that and then taking out about a thirty-five-foot section out of unit ten, you can get a ladder truck in, back out, and then back up.
That drive aisle is four hundred feet long, so it was questioned as to whether code would require that turnaround.
I think we need him on the microphone.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And it came down to it would really be the fire department's discretion, and they wanted it, and they...
Loud enough for everybody. So just to answer your question, so as Gene had pointed out, the four hundred feet down, taking out thirty-five feet out of unit ten, allowed for the ladder to come down, turn in, back up, and then come back out the same way.
Okay. Yeah, and the microphone is just a... Because it's recorded, so...
Oh, no.
For everyone watching at home, our large audience. Okay.
I actually have just one question on the well. So if you... If there was a decision to drill a well, what side would be... Would... Did you guys identify a spot yet if you had to drill a well? Okay.
Don't think so. No.
So we are... We're still investigating it. We don't know which side the well will be on, honestly. I'm... The septic is in Middleton. You don't... Because it's a private well, you don't have to drill on the same side, because it's not coming necessarily from the water district. But most likely, you would try to do that. But I don't have an answer. And that, to Mr. Goldberg's point, that is gonna be one of the things... We will be coming back to you for a minor modification, because it'll be below ground. But we will be back to show you what the change is for the water supply. And I'm hoping that's gonna be, you know, in two thousand twenty-three. But I can't make that promise because of the two towns needing to commit.
So I conditioned, if it does pivot to a well, it would be a modification, which would open it up to peer review and a hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Gene, on page one, under the date of hearing at the top.
Yeah.
Should November be twenty-two?
Yes. Thank you. So I'll point out in finding of fact number four is where typically you find that property utilities service the site. And so here, I commented they do for everything except for water. And then I point to condition twenty-eight, where it's conditioned prior to land disturbance, that it has to have an agreement on water.
And just to be... I just want to mention, so prior to land disturbance, and that includes land disturbance both in North Andover and Middleton, right?
I...
I would think. I mean, it's a whole...
I don't know that our decision would hold them. It wouldn't necessarily, but it will... That will be the case, and you can... I'll make it that case. So it'll be anywhere.
So I get it. I don't know that we can condition in Middleton, but it doesn't make sense for us to go out of our way to condition that allow you to move forward and then build half a building in Middleton and then not get water. So I think we just leave the condition as it is, but I think... I don't know if we can... If there's a planner and someone, a corresponding person in Middleton, just to let them know what we did with this water condition. And it would be nice if they had a mirror condition as well.
Yep.
Gene, on page four, special conditions.
Yep.
I think we skipped from thirteen to fifteen.
Okay. So condition twenty-one is a result of the traffic pair review. And so he suggested this condition so that MAST DOT is aware of that traffic analysis that suggested a warrant is triggered at the intersection of Sanderwood, Shockners, and Route one fourteen.
Gina, number thirty-five. Can you just quickly summarize how we got to that bond amount?
Yeah, I actually was torn between twenty and forty. So a lot of the mill projects that they did were twenty. Princeton was forty for commercial and forty for Princeton. I'm indifferent. I thought it was more similar to building just one commercial building as opposed to four separate multifamily buildings.
It seems... It also seemed low to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, let's do thirty.
I mean, essentially, if something goes wrong, you want to be able to bring the site to a stable condition.
Right.
With the bond funds, so.
Let's do thirty.
Okay.
Thanks, Gene.
I had that same thought.
And it came up quite a while ago, but you guys wanted to make sure that the septic design is approved, both in Middleton and our health director, even though it's located in Middleton. So I conditioned that under twenty-seven.
Great. Thank you, Gene. Okay. Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
For the additional screening condition, I'm gonna put prior to certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
That's to John's point about having a look... Okay, thank you.
Because if they go for certificate occupancy, it's fully built out at that point, so it'll be the best help.
Okay. So moved.
Motion made to close the public hearing. And second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Who can vote on this?
Four. It's on the decision. So Aton, John, Peter, and Sean.
Okay. Create a motion to approve the site plan review special permit.
So moved. As amended, right?
As amended. Motion made.
I'll second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Carrie supports nothing. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
All right. Can we quickly do the discussion item, five-thirty Turnpike Street? Let's do that quickly. It's, I think, seems to probably be the same group of people, but I think that'll be quicker. So let's just get that one done. Discussion item, five-thirty Turnpike, Merrimack College, presentation of parking utilization report, which was conditioned and noted as a decision site plan review for one year after issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Jeff?
Thank you. Good to be back to the planning board. I've missed you all, because I'm sure you've missed me. I'm here for two reasons tonight, and I sort of call this the precursor to what I assume will be several meetings on the corner development, but I thought it would be best to come and make sure all the other homework assignments were taken care of before we got into that project in fall. So, Gene, if you can just move up to the next slide. So in June twenty-two, I was before this board for a site plan review waiver. And it was provided on the condition of making sure that we didn't actually end up with parking problems on the site, because that was an actual real question. Right? There was just a lot of confusion at that time. We had just come out of the Royal Crest discussion. The property had just been acquired. And we came in and talked about what the project was, which, and that was just a renovation of existing facilities. The concern was the facilities were gonna come down. And through that conversation, one of the questions that come up was what was really gonna happen with parking. And so we said we would come back in this fall and just give an update as to what that looked like. And that's what I'm here to do today. So, Gene, if you want to roll forward. So just as a reminder, before we stepped in and made a renovation, which is more classroom academic space-based, five-ten was a bank with a drive-through in it. And on the front end of the building and the back end was either a workout facility. At one time, it was a dance studio, but it had a high degree of traffic in and out of the camp... Of the property. Five-thirty... Sorry. Five-thirty was that building. Five-ten was an office building rented to accounting firms and Randstad, which was a temp agency, things like that. We conducted parking checks on a fairly consistent basis. We rarely use fifty percent of the parking lot, which was predictable because of the following, which I said that we would do, and I actually think worked really well for us, not just on the site, but generally speaking. We create up a shuttle and didn't allow students unless they had some medical need to be parking on the site. Otherwise, they had to park in the general population on the campus, and they would shuttle over. The shuttle ran every twenty minutes. On the average day, there were about thirty-four passengers per day. That will seem low, because most of the students that were in and out of that facility are engineering students, and we actually moved all of the upper-class engineering students who were in our housing to the Royal Crest units. So their literal walk never crossed one fourteen. They didn't actually have to drive over. And that was a very effective policy for us. So the only real people that were parking on the site were faculty and staff. Offices were actually pretty minimal, and those that were actually still leasing in the facility itself at five-ten. Go to the next one. So this will look somewhat familiar on the left. This was the... The one on the left is the ITE slide that we showed a year ago and outlined what the parking requirements were based on the usage, both what was ours, and it had been ours when we were leasing the space, as well as the other inhabitants of five-ten. And you see, there's a hundred and twenty-six spaces. They... At that point, we didn't think we would use roughly half. Today, the number of leases, or leasers, rather, has been reduced. And the number of people who are going over there has remained relatively flat. So actually, the usage based on the IT for institution has actually gone down. And then the lap... The next slide, Gene, if you could, is literally, we went over and took the busiest day of the busiest first week. And if anyone's in higher ed, you know that in the first two weeks, everybody attends classes. And then what happens after that? I will defer to the chuckles in the room. So I picked the busiest day, and we went out and literally just did a parking count. And you can see, really, this didn't get to be even close to the fifty percent until that late afternoon portion. And then dropped off fairly quickly. At the end of the day, the facility is... It's been a great use for us. A lot of classes happen in there. A lot of engineering students are in and out. They tend to spend most of the day there. They're not transient. We actually take non-engineering classes and bring them over to the building, so we don't have lots of students kind of go back and forth. And it's really become sort of a home of the engineering program. And I...
Is there any dining on site?
So right now, we bring our food truck over. And if you actually look at, and I apologize, I probably should have had this first, but the site are the two buildings that sort of sit on the white parking lot on the upper side of the... Gene has just circled them. In between those two buildings, right now, if you were to drive over, you'll actually see there is a food truck sitting in between it. And one of the things that we're gonna do is Jersey barrier on either side, so that cars can have to drive around the facility. So there's a place for people to sit outside and eat, at least until it gets too... So there's a place for people to sit outside and eat, at least until it gets too cold, to do that. There'll be a renovation project in five-ten, which will put what we would call Mac Mart, but I think what you would find is in most hotels, right next to the, the front desk, right? It's a room, you know, roughly about this open space right here with just chips and pre-made sandwiches and things like that. You go over, you swipe your card yourself, take it and, and, and just eat on site.
I think the buildings came out really nicely. Just from, I haven't been inside, but just from the outside perspective, they look really nice. So thank you for this report. Does anyone have any questions? Great. And I think it was a good condition to have, and it's a good report to come a year later and to see how things are going to know that we did it right.
Yep. I greatly appreciate it. It's actually, it did in some really odd way in that moment in time, really help us rethink how we're doing the housing for students on the Royal Crest side. So I think it did actually work out well for us as well. So I appreciate that.
Fantastic. Okay. All right. Next, new public hearing. One eighty, oh, sorry, three fifteen Turnpike Street, Gray Star Development East LLC, application for limited site plan review under Article eight, Part three, site plan review and Article ten administration, section one ninety-five, ten point seven of the North End of a zoning bylaw. Applicant proposes construction on Merrimack College campus of a seventy-seven thousand six hundred foot, square foot building situated along Turnpike Street and a sixty-two thousand square foot building situated along Andover Street. Both buildings are comprised of academic and residential space for college use. The site is located in the R-three zoning district. Jean?
As you're aware, town meeting passed the limited site plan review by law this past May. And we recently received the Attorney General's Office approval of all zoning by law amendments as written. That approval has been posted, so that now they are in effect. The building inspector has provided a written determination that the proposed use is protected by the Dover amendment. Limited site plan review is applied to Dover protected uses and does not require a special permit. The required information for the application is largely the same as site plan review, though. And so the Dover protection allows the planning board to still reasonably regulate at eight different criteria of the site. Some of those are relation of bulk height setbacks, cover, lot coverage, yard sizes, lot areas, the physical layout of the plan as it relates to safety for vehicle and pedestrian traffic, adequacy of parking and loading spaces, physical lighting, exterior lighting, convenience, protection of adjoining premises against seriously detrimental uses by provision for surface water drainage, adequacy of methods of disposal of refuge and other waste resulting from the uses permitted on the site, and adequacy of fire protection measures. So the applicant has filed with the zoning board appeals for a height variance as well. I think they open at their next meeting. The planning board shall file its decision with the town clerk within ninety days of receipt of an application, unless such time is extended by a written agreement with the applicant. And the application was filed in the clerk's office on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. The ninety-day period is November fifteenth. So there's still a good amount of time to review this. Stormwater pair review has begun. The first pair review letter has been received and sent to the applicants on September eleventh, but that has not been turned around at this point.
So Jean, can I ask a jurisdictional question? I noticed the entity here is Gray Star Development East LLC. It's not Merrimack College, so.
So Merrimack's the owner and Gray Star is the applicant. And Gray Star is, Jeff can probably explain it better than me, but they are actually financed in the building for a twenty-year period. Through Merrimack is leasing from them for twenty years.
So is your question why it falls under Dover, if it's not?
If it's a private party.
So I think, so I think it's not the owner, it's the use that's important, right? It could be any owner, but it's still an educational use. So that, as long as it's actually an educational use, I don't think the owner matters. So that's that.
So in the variance to the ZVA.
So we can do.
Soil, slope, and.
Topography. Yep. I mean, that honestly, that was one of the ones I was questioning, because we were very specific, what, including any other special permit in the bylaw, including but not limited to what is a special permit, we wanted specifically in there. And so I've been waiting for the Attorney General's response to come back on that, and they approved it, requiring the special permit.
Variance, basement, slow condition, slope, topography, height of the building. Okay. What happens in twenty years?
Well, I don't get it. Jeff, for that question, want to?
Sure.
Good.
Okay. So my goal here tonight is not to walk through every aspect of this project. We'll have all the architects and all the players and everything like that. But I thought, seeing there had been some history about getting to this point, it'd be good to get that out of the way first, so we can focus, starting at the next meeting, on all the specifics. But I'll answer some of those questions as we go. So Jean, if you could just walk through this really quickly, and then I will catch up to, to Peter's question. So this site design, you may have some vague memory of. Right? In September twenty-twenty-one, I showed this to the planning board. This was in the middle of the Royal Crest project, and I sort of gave an update of this is where we were before there was a Royal Crest. This is where we were headed. We were actually pretty happy with this. We were kind of going on our merry way. The way this would look, just to explain how the, the, how this comes together. So the housing component, which is slightly different in the actual design, and I'll get to that in a minute, but to answer Peter's question. So how this works is there's a ground lease to an entity of which the college has a financial invested interest in, as does Gray Star, which is the developer and slash financing agent. Right? A building is built based on their financing, not the college's. The college runs the, runs the building, has responsibility for running it. It maintains it on our campus. And at the end of, I think it'll be thirty or thirty-five years, the property, the building itself reverts back to the institution. So from our perspective, and we did, we wrestled a lot with whose actually name goes on this. One of the reasons I wanted to be here first, and I will be here straight through, is because I don't want this to appear to be something that the college is not taking the lead on from a public perspective, because we're the ones that will, will have its, have it in the long run, right? I don't want to hand that off to a developer and treat it like it's a separate thing, right? They're not, they're not local. They're not part of the campus otherwise. But this is solely for institutional housing, ours. Okay? This you might actually have more, more memory of. This was the slide where we were actually talking about height across the street in that other project, and I was describing, this looked like three, but I said I would envision that it would actually probably get to four to have any numbers. Have the right numbers in terms of getting students out of Royal Crest in any meaningful way. And we had a broader conversation about whether this was a more appropriate place or not. And without holding anyone to it, I think that showing this, at this body, and then showing it to other folks, led a lot of folks to come to a conclusion that if there was going to be housing, there was going to be residential housing for college. For Merrimack, it would probably be best to be putting on the corner and not at Royal Crest. I don't think that's a shock to anyone here. Right? And this just recaps that, right? During the planning for the, for our project, right, the idea of Royal Crest was born. I always take responsibility for that. We halted the corner residential project and tried to do something at Royal Crest. Our belief was that was the right thing to do. Obviously, that didn't, didn't pass the, the, the town meeting. But based on initial feedback from stakeholders, it was pretty clear that this was the corner in which to go with. So shortly after the, the town meeting in May of twenty-twenty-two, we started working on this project. Jean, you want to walk to the, the next one? All right, that just recaps it. I just sort of did that faster than, than the slides catch up. So this is where it brings us to, right? My goal is to just bring us up to speed and answer any sort of generic questions before we bring anyone back in. This is a multi-use residential and academic space on the first floor. Over the course of what I assume to be the next several planning board meetings, this is five hundred and forty beds. It's ten thousand square feet of academic space on the first floor. Right? We think this excites the corner, yet preserves an access point for people to still see the collegiate church. The two buildings together are just under fourteen, a hundred and forty thousand square feet. And they'll be on the, they'll be four stories, which would just help with the, the bed count. We're trying to stay within a height, and we'll go through this in detail on the third. We're trying to stay this within a height of what's around us. There's a four-story condo office building across Andover Street. The church itself is roughly that same height as well, so we tried to stay within that. It's just higher than, than the, the housing, the height ceiling in the town. Jean, if you can go to the next one. Right? We submitted to the TRC on the twelfth and went through that process. That ultimately did help change some of the design on the landscaping side. It was interesting to note, the last meeting about fire trucks getting in and out and backing up, the fire department wanted to make sure that in our site, there was a rotary that was placed in it, so they could get in and out without having to back out, which obviously we were very in favor of. We will submit to the, we've submitted to the zoning board, and we'll go through that process. All right? So we'll go through the formal presentation on the third. We'll start the zoning board of appeal process on the tenth, and then those will run concurrently for a while. At the same time, we haven't reached out yet, but we will have, we'll also have some community meetings. The, what we used to affectionately call in the Royal Crest project, the Berkeley Road Community. But all those streets will do a community meeting or two to make sure that those neighbors are aware of what's happening. Obviously, for some of them, as you know, some of them spoke pretty strongly from this podium, that, that a dorm should be on the corner, or at least somewhere else on the campus, but not at Royal Crest. We'll also talk to the one-fourteen corridor businesses that are around this, this site, orders Bertucci's and an office park, and then the Berkeley Road Community. We'll also talk to the, the neighbors in Andover. The site doesn't, doesn't abut it, but it comes close enough, yes.
When you hold these type of meetings, where, where do you hold them?
I think we'll probably either do that, if I can find a neighbor who would house it there, that's great. If not, we'll use the community center at Royal Crest. We'll try to bring them all across the street onto the campus if, if, if they don't want to do that.
And how do you get word out to those three different groups?
We'll mail to them. All right, I'll just, I'll just do a dear resident mail to them.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so, so can you scroll down? So this, again, is what we started with. And what we have submitted and we'll go through on the third, Jean, if you want to roll forward, is, is something slightly different, right? There are two buildings along one-fourteen that have been combined and pulled back a little bit further off one-fourteen. And then the building that is along Andover Street was elongated slightly, so it's not two buildings, it's one. And there's a two-lane road now that goes out to the front of the church. And you can see there's a fairly significant landscape, starting at the corner and getting to the front door of the church, with that rotary that exists, which is helpful to getting fire trucks on that side. And then, Jean, if you want to go to the other ones, and then we'll, I can answer whatever questions. This is what it looked like from the rendering from that corner on that day back in twenty-twenty-one. And you want to, this is kind of where, this is what it is as of now. Right? I think this is actually, does a really good job of both taking up space that, you know, for buildings of some size, but also enough open space along the, the project and sets well back off the corner. Right? We, we really did not want to take away the visual from the church. If you want to scroll the other one, you'll see what I mean. This is standing on that corner. Right? We really wanted to make sure that the church remained a prominent part of the visual of that intersection. We didn't want the buildings to be right on the sidewalk. We didn't want to convert that into an arch or anything like that. And some of that was driven by the lengthy conversations that we had had across the street and being sensitive to that, that process. And I'm happy to go back and forth. I know there will be a hundred questions of the architects and others we better able to answer, but like I said, I did not want to start that meeting with all the technical questions without getting these two parts out of the way first.
Just to frame sort of what you're doing is the, that, yeah, right there. Is that actually a road?
No, that's, that's just a walking path.
A walking path?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are the, the building pictures sort of close to what you think you're going to for your direction?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't finalized an exact, you know, whether that's going to be that shade of yellow or not. I'm sensitive to making sure that we're not coming in then with something that's purple when we want to build it. But I think for right now, this is a pretty good indication of the route we want to take and what that look feels like and how that, how that approaches that intersection.
I set a question. From what you originally proposed, and was that two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah, it wasn't proposed, we were just working on it.
Working on that till what you're proposing now. It seems the original working plan was more robust than this, and it's scaled back. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, actually, it is. If, can you just roll, roll back? Jean, I think it's to the, keep going. This one right here.
Right.
Yeah, so, so there is, if you could see B, which is a C-shaped building along Andover, there's a small parking lot right next to it. And next to that is the actual entrance into the college, right?
Okay.
So, so C really has elongated to come closer. One could put a facility in the future in between the building, what is now C, and that entrance. But that's not part of our project look now, and that's not, that's not something we would do through this type of arrangement.
I guess that's what I was getting at, is it's going to be a phased project, or is this kind of the first initial, or?
I, I, I would classify that as, that's an option some point in the future, but it's not part of something we're considering now. It's not something we're, we're looking at in any serious way. We just wanted to make sure that there was enough space. We also didn't want to make that building look so big on both corners, because we did want to break it up. And then obviously, on one-fourteen, D and E slightly, it's more like they've come together to create one piece. But D, I think, in this, and I don't have the, the drawings in front of me exactly, but D and C are further away from the corner than they are here, because again, I wanted to be sensitive to that, that, that feel.
Where, where's the Andover border? I know it's close.
You can see the line, if you look up at the, at what I'll call ten o'clock or almost eleven o'clock on the screen, you'll see that there's green on the left and it's not on the right. That is the property line between North Andover and Andover, and it runs right down.
So is that A building in Andover?
The A building is in Andover, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so I don't have questions, but things I'm, I'd like to hear more about
Absolutely.
in the, in the future are why going from, I'm just curious, mostly curious, why going from multiple buildings to lesser amount of buildings with more mass, what the thought process is behind that. I see some pretty robust landscaping, so I'm curious as to what trees are already there. Because there are trees, in the picture, the, if we can go all the way down, Jean, or to, to page like twelve, twelve, maybe? Yeah, so there are trees there right along, those orange trees and some of those right along Andover Street there. So I want to know what trees are already there, what trees are being taken down, what trees are being planted.
Yep.
Those were the two biggest things. And then if you've learned anything based on kind of our discussion, we had about five-thirty, plans for who might live here. And again, is that, are you doing now? Okay, the people that live here, maybe our freshmen and sophomores are going to be having more courses on this side, rather than going across the street, so.
Let me just answer that one first, because I think it's important. So the building that's going to run along one-fourteen is going to be the same type of freshman dorm that any one of us had ever been in. Simple box, two beds, two bureaus, two closets, two desks. The only real difference in that will be the bathroom setup. Right? In today's day and age, we don't do the typical, everyone comes together in one core bathroom. Now you set up a space where you walk in and there is a series of doors. You get a door to use at that moment and you walk in it. And in it is a shower, a sink, and a toilet. Right? And so you've got your own mini bathroom that's yours for your period of use, and then you come back out. The building along Andover Street is going to be a suite style, where I'll describe, it's two built, two rooms, where there's two beds, two bureaus, two closets, two desks. But in between it is bath, is a shared bathroom. So the four people have their own unique bathroom, right?
Yeah, so it was just a quick question. So are these two new buildings for anticipated growth or current needs today?
This is current needs.
Okay.
I, I think at the end of the day, and I appreciate this, you've sort of set me up for the question. At the end of the day, the, the ability to continue to provide our students housing that is affordable has met its match with the current growth in rental costs at Royal Crest. Right? There is, since we were all last together, those rents on an annual basis have gone up eighteen and thirteen percent. Right? And I, I think that's as much for everybody. I don't think we're being treated any better or worse. We may be a little better, but we're certainly no worse. Right? But, but there is, there is a point in time where the institution's relationship and leasing as much at Royal Crest just isn't as viable as it once was, right? The whole reason we were across. The whole reason we were across the street was to actually help make that financing work over time. Whatever their future is, I don't know, they don't share that with me. But I think from our perspective, while we will always hope to grow, the reality is, I would see certainly the one-on-one, the 114 side being more freshmen, right? And I think there'll be some freshman beds that will move up in upper class, and I think you'd see a reduction in Royal Crest. It's not large enough to get everybody out of Royal Crest, but I think it would be a significant step forward.
Just one thing, so I'm clear.
Sure.
The building on the Andover Street side, is that all in North Andover's?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no part of the project that's not in, not in North Andover.
But the original renderings we have in 2021 had both.
Yes, the, the, there was a master plan that we had worked on at the time, and that would have been, to your question, a phased approach. The reality is, is some of that academic space we built elsewhere, right? So the nursing center that we built during the process of, of Royal Crest, which is in Andover, right? One could have envisioned that might have been part of that master plan, but we decided to put it in another location on the campus closer to some other academic buildings so as not to cause more confusion in the system between all the various projects and all the various towns.
I guess what would be helpful for me at our next meeting is to understand how this project overlays with some of the proposed developments on 114. So like, I guess, understanding, and I know that's kind of a moving target at the moment because not everything's finalized, but understand kind of where the current either easements or takings potentially could happen with respect to your property, how that affects the project, and maybe try to get some, some, some drawings or some, some architectural imagery to show what it would look like.
Absolutely, that, that's actually pretty easy to do, whether we get to it to the first meeting or not, but VHB is the civil engineering on this project, they're also the lead on the 114 redesign. So yeah, so that, that is already built into all our plans, so that's easy to do.
So on, to, to extension to that, are there any new curb cuts? Doesn't look like it, right?
Nope, nope, we're not touching any of that stuff.
So lighting, obviously we'll touch upon, stormwater we'll touch upon, traffic, any?
There's nothing, if, if anything, we're taking, we're taking people that are coming off, right, that are driving in and out of Royal Crest, right, and moving them on here. These aren't going to have kitchens and things like that, so there's, there's an entirely different reason to either stay on the campus or get off the campus.
Parking, any changes to parking?
No.
Okay.
No.
And, and I guess sewer infrastructure? Like, I don't know, because I mean, these are 540 beds, I don't know.
Yep, yep, yeah, we'll, we'll go through all that.
Okay.
Peter, anything you want, you can ask now or that you're thinking about for the future?
Want to hear about water.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we'll bring all that. I mean, I, we'll, we've got the whole thing, like I said, I didn't want to come in and get right into it without, you know, then asking questions about 5:30 or, you know, 5:10 or anything else, so. If there's anything else, obviously, this is not a one crack at it anyways, right? We'll have multiple meetings.
Tell, tell us again the number of beds and square footage.
It's 540 beds, the combination of the two buildings. It's just a hair under 140,000 square feet of building.
Thanks.
And I think by the time you see the next meeting, just to get ahead of it, right, I think you'll start to see there's going to be a significant amount of solar panels on the top of this building, right? Obviously, there's a lot of roof to be able to do something like that. I don't think it'll cover all of it, but it'll cover a decent portion of it. So, and we'll just continue to evolve as we continue.
Well, I was going to ask you about energy consumption and what your plans are, and that'd be very interesting to look at.
Someone will be here to do that, I won't pretend to be the one to get into that. I'll start talking about kilowatt hours or something and get everyone confused. You can hear the moaning from the team over here, so, okay?
Okay.
I did receive a couple of questions related to drainage, so I'll get with your project engineer to make sure he responds to those at the next meeting as well.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Gene, are there any public comments or questions that came in today?
Nope.
Any members of the public want to make any comments or ask any questions? Yeah? Jared, you want to come first?
Good point.
All right, come on up. Everyone?
Thank you, that's an excellent presentation, and, you know, I'm all for Merrimack doing what it needs to do on its campus. I realize it's a constrained site and.
Just, just for the record, can you just introduce yourself?
Oh yeah, I'm Gerald Brecker, 488 Pleasant Street.
Thank you.
So my, my question or comment really has nothing to do with the specific plan to build these buildings. That's, in my view, Merrimack's business. But the issue on 114 is a serious public safety issue. And what I read in the paper is that no matter about when these buildings go up, there'll still be hundreds of Merrimack students living on the other side of 114. And right now, the situation is, we have a choice between vastly increased congestion caused by that traffic light that goes on and off when students push a button. And at night, there seems to be a time after which that light doesn't work at all. And particularly on rainy, dark nights, there are students running back and forth across the street. They're wearing black, they're looking at their phones, they're not paying any attention. And it's going to be a tragedy, not only for the kid who gets run over, but for the driver who may be using all possible caution, is all of a sudden going to be involved in a motor vehicle death. And I feel strongly enough about this that I would recommend to the planning board, and I would say the same thing to the zoning board, and if necessary, to town meeting, that no permits of any kind be granted for any further development at Merrimack College unless and until they build a pedestrian walkway over 114. And not just promise to do it, but actually do it. I think that it's a, it's a serious public safety issue, it's a congestion issue, and it should have been part of the whole discussion of, at the time of Royal Crest. Royal Crest, one way or another, is going to come back again. Whether or not the growth plans for Merrimack involve taking over all of, all of Royal Crest and redeveloping it as a campus, I don't know. But eventually, these two properties are always going to be joined at the hip. And in that case, we cannot have the, the Mickey Mouse arrangement that there is today. And I think that the, representing the public and the citizens and taxpayers of North Andover, that our boards should insist that Merrimack solve the problem. And building a pedestrian overpass over 114, I believe, would solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a comment?
Sure, I was just going to say one point before that, just about that, is that, one, in terms of this hearing, obviously, it, it doesn't apply because it's on, on this, on the other side. I mean, to the extent that they build more housing on their side, there's less people at Royal Crest. But assuming, even if they wanted to today to build that and we conditioned it, it's not only up to them, right? Because DOT has, air rights of DOT, they could say, we want to build a bridge and we have, here's the, whatever millions of dollars it costs, and DOT so far has said no. So just, it's a really, it's a good point and it's fair consideration, and it's, I think it's coming from a very appropriate place. It's just, there's just more to it than just whether they want to and whether we condition it, just, we don't have all the cards, that's all.
Where there's, will there's a way.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, a comment on your point. A pedestrian walkway was part of the Royal Crest discussion. I personally felt that what we were presented with was very unhelpful and was, had all the appearances of trying to justify why they couldn't do it. And the board brought to their attention a number of real-world examples that could have been very workable, but in my view, a very unhelpful discussion during Royal Crest and even when pressed. Thanks.
Sure.
So on that point, I just want to say the following, just because I think history really matters. The college is the one that came forward with a, with a footbridge to go over 114. We proposed it to the Department of Transportation and to Mast Dot. Ultimately, their view was they were not going to move forward with, with that. Instead, we did the crosswalk and all the sidewalks, and that was a 50-50 split. Merrimack paid for 50% of the sidewalk, starting at that corner, right here on the, the screen, all the way up, and then on the other side of the street. So this wasn't just for Merrimack students. I would be the first to admit that the majority of people walking across that street are Merrimack students. I didn't particularly love that, it just was better than what was, what was there before, which was nothing. The college would love to have a footbridge there. At the very end of the Royal Crest process, I actually put in, in with the town, a proposal to, to the federal highway system to, to add on to the 114 project, right? To add a footbridge that the college would help finance just to get this in. And obviously, the Royal Crest project didn't happen. And I would actually say there's two parts of this, right? The first one is, you're right, it's Mast Dot and the ability to fly one over the highway. And the second is, it actually has to have a landing pad somewhere. And I can't speak for Royal Crest anymore, but I would have to say, I don't actually find that there would be any willingness in which to do that, whether it's for our students or there are other residents that would cross over the highway to get to the doctor's office or anything, anything else. What I, what I do know is that in the redesign of 114, the system that's in place now will be dramatically improved, as we were told, right? There was a lot of change immediately after Royal Crest, but my understanding, what's back in the 114 project is more in alignment with what a real intersection should be, not what this is, which is a HOCS system. All right?
Okay. Thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
Can I ask you a question on that? What was the timeframe when you, you said originally Merrimack had proposed a footbridge, and, and then when DOT said no, we ended up with what we've got?
Yeah.
But what was the timeframe?
So it was actually, it was Governor Baker's first year, I don't remember what that year is.
Yeah.
But it was Governor Baker's first year, we did it in association with Representative DiZoglio and House Ways and Means Chair Dempsey pulled us all together. And that's what we were pushing for, was to go over, and what we ended up with was the project that you see today.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sir, did you have a comment or question you wanted to come up?
So I represent, actually, a couple of folks here.
Okay.
We're, we're coming out of Andover.
Can you just tell us your name?
My name's Justin Descolli.
Okay.
We live down in Shawshene, so down the hill from you, you're your neighbor down the hill. And we're very interested to hear about your drain water, stormwater management. Have you done any studies on that and what's the plan for your stormwater?
Mostly on the site.
Okay, because your stormwater now is not on the site, right? It crosses through Elm Street, goes to the reservoir, then follows down through the river to our culverts into the Shawshene River, correct? And you realize that that culvert is not owned by the town and causes flooding in all our basements, correct?
No.
Okay, well, that's what we're here to bring up. This is a big issue.
So why don't you just, instead of the cross-examination, why don't you just give us the point, the, what, so what's, what?
My point is, we're very concerned.
Tell us what's happening.
Okay, so if I can share this with you.
Sure.
This is the proposed area.
Hold on, wait, okay, good, yeah.
They want, so right there in the corner is where they're proposing.
So we're looking at the corner of Turnpike and Andover Street, yeah?
Yep, and so right there is a reservoir right now where they hold their water.
Okay.
That water now drains out into this gully that feeds into the culvert that goes under the homes in the Shawshene River. That's causing flooding and backup in these rainstorms in all these homes. And we're concerned by adding more and more homes to the, more and more rainwater roofing that already has nowhere to go. Where is it going to continue to go? So our concern is just.
So the, so the question that we'll ask to be answered is, with the change in impervious surface created by the buildings, what the new stormwater plans, how they would account for that?
Right.
That's the question you want answered, right?
That's the question we want answered.
Okay.
And I guess my other concern is, how do we, how do we continue to learn about this?
Okay. So, let me give, give you this back, or you can get it there. So how do you continue to learn about these hearings?
Yes.
So you can look, you can sign up to get our agendas, so.
I can show you that after this meeting.
After the meeting, we'll show you how to get the, how to get the planning board agendas.
Okay.
Or you can look every, so we meet every, basically every other Tuesday.
Yeah.
And if you look the Thursday before, our agenda's posted. I'm guessing this is going to be on the agenda most of the next couple of meetings.
Right.
And we'll be addressing those particular items among other things. But Gene can show you how to get our agendas and, and you can also get her information and come for the meetings or ask questions and stuff like that.
Sorry, we're, we're all very.
Nope.
Very little bit animated about this. We've had four or five feet of water in our basements twice in the last month.
We, we know.
And there, yeah, and there's a big result as a result of that. My friend Dick here has been living in the neighborhood for, what, 60 years?
I'm sorry?
You've been living in the neighborhood for what, 60 years?
55.
55 years, and so this has been a big issue. So we want to make sure that that gets addressed with these new homes.
Okay.
And that's what we want to make sure that we bring to our attention.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is, is the town of Andover also aware of your concerns relative to this project at Merrimack on the North Andover side?
So I've only become aware of this project since late yet last week.
Okay.
So no, we have brought it up with our selectmen though, we did notify them today.
Okay.
So we will make it sure that.
And where this, where this is, will be a discussion of stormwater plans for a proposal in North Andover, a part of which could affect property in Andover. Do you have any sense of our interaction with the town in that respect?
I mean, I think it depends on what the stormwater reports and our peer review says.
Okay.
Right, because if they, so what happens is, they're, they're going to come up with a report that shows, here's the system and how we're setting it up, and this is what's going to, we believe, happen, right? Either X amount of more flow will come out and it'll be dealt with, or it won't be dealt with, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
We don't just say, oh, thanks for the report, we agree with you. What we do is then we have our own experts review that, ask questions, and determine if that's accurate and if any changes need to be made. So depending, if our own experts also agree that nothing additional will be coming off-site, then I'm not sure what there is to do. But if there is a culvert that is consistently not working or overflowing in Andover, I mean, you should definitely, what, regardless of this project, speak to their, their DPW.
And you said the culvert is not town-owned, who owns it?
They say we own it.
The residents.
That's right.
And who's?
We, we don't know for a fact, we're trying to figure this out, this is legal.
Who says, when you say they say?
The town of Andover tells us that we own the culverts under our home, which is drain water.
So I'm not sure how helpful the town of Andover is going to be in this particular situation.
Wow.
That.
But, but it goes to the point that there's strain water going through our, our culverts without our, without our permission.
Right, listen, I, I, we all appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and as the chair indicates, there'll be a stormwater analysis, we'll have our own reviewer look at it, and so now we know to pay attention to this as well.
Right, exactly. And we'll, believe me, we'll be talking to the town of Andover too.
Good.
When we saw this come up, we had to make sure we were.
And I hope you'll continue to participate and get the agendas, because, yeah, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just add one, one thing to that?
But you got to come up and introduce yourself.
Dave Clermont, I'm at 16 Caris Brook in Andover. So I just wanted to ask about, so you, you mentioned, I think, that you were aware that the stormwater came from Merrimack into these culverts? Did, did you say that or not?
No, what, the first question I was asked was, is it, what is the runoff? And it's not really runoff, there's a detention system on either side of our property.
Okay.
Right, one is way back at the football field, so, so, everything that comes onto the campus, right, because while our campus is at an angle, can I get up here?
Sure.
I wanna make sure everyone can hear this, right? We, we've been through this here, uh, at, at this body, right, so this is the low part of our campus. There's a higher part, but it itself is at the lower part of everything above it.
Okay.
Right? So our campus ends up being the flow of everything that comes up 114, down. So we built a significant detention system, so this morning, when I drove onto the campus, there was, I don't know, how big do you think that is, five, six feet, right, it's almost like a lake. And it slowly drains, it's all engineered, it slowly drains out, goes underneath the campus, and comes out to the green space into another detention system, where that detention system slowly rolls it back out. And that was done as an agreement between North Andover and Andover years ago, when there was a joint process, because what was happening was the water was literally like a, like a river coming across the campus and into the Andover homes behind the buil- behind the campus.
So Jeff, are you able to get us any info about how that, again, it, it's hard right now, because we've had so, so much rainfall to kind of make determinations, because we've had flooding everywhere. Um, but just how that, it seems like there's that second detention system, how that's functioning, what the levels are like, and things like that, because I think what they're saying is, it's going from one detention to the second detention, and then it's supposed to be designed, which is, which it's supposed to do. And then it's designed to go out slowly, but the question is, either is it functioning as designed? Is it overloaded by current water, and how does this, if in any way, impact that?
And, yeah, will this exacerbate the problem, obviously, right?
Yeah.
So, but, I think the question we, and, and we were talking earlier about, obviously, getting Andover involved in this to, to figure out what's going on, but I think at an initial starting point, we're just trying to determine, is this area where, where these lines connect to these culverts, is this water collected from Merrimack's property here to then flow down the drainage to the Shawshene?
This, well, again, again, I'll, we will go through the process, because I don't, I don't, I'm not the engineer, right? So I don't wanna get, get caught, right, but at the end of the day, water that starts way over here
Yeah.
is going this way.
Yeah.
It's collected into a detention system here on our campus, right? And then we detain it and stop it from hitting all of this neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and it goes here. And then it slowly goes, how it goes for, I don't even know how long that is, probably over a mile, how it goes from here to here, if that's true or not, I, I can't speak to that right now.
So that's what I think we wanna start with, uh, to be able to explore further, is to get the information as to what currently, even what currently exists, because I don't think we have that information. So if we could just, and we could take the discussion, I'll find it perfectly fine.
Right, so that's-
If we could just start with that, then we could find out.
Right, because that may be, we may come to the conclusion that this project is not going to change what's happening now.
Absolutely.
You still may have a problem.
Totally.
So you, that may be a discussion of what actually happens, outside of this, may be the best way to come to a conclusion.
We, we may conclude that it's actually not here, there may be some break somewhere in some system well beyond us.
Absolutely.
Right, so you guys can talk about that, and we will continue to talk about what this project may do.
Jeff, I wanna make sure I understood you correctly, was, was part of your point that the first holding area, which is up by your fields?
Mm-hmm.
That, that is capturing, uh, non-Merrimack College property water?
Yes.
That the site of the campus just happens to be by the drain of a much larger bathtub of land that is not Merrimack land? Um, but all that water is coming on to the campus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, that like, I mean, again, we can walk through this, but the deten- our detention basin by our football fields is the closest to 125. And all of that wetland that goes up 125, and then everything that's coming off 114, and as 114 has been further developed.
Which is not Merrimack property.
Correct.
But the water flows downhill, and
Yes, and it gets to us.
Because of the location of the campus, it sheets across your campus, and so you dug a hole to try to manage that.
Yes, there was, 25 years ago now, maybe? There was, there was, in the prior administration, there was a lengthy conversation, as I understand it, between the towns of North Andover and Andover, because in essence, what was happening was, it was the neighbors in Andover on Rock Ridge Road in that community, which is right behind us. They could literally see in a rainstorm, of really not any great note, again, the only lore, it was long before my time, but they could see it coming across, they could literally see water coming through, and so their immediate assumption was, it must be Merrimack, and not that it was coming from above. So the detention basin was put up on the high side, right, and then it runs under, and that has actually, I mean, it made a significant, uh, improvement. I don't, you know, I'm not sure anyone would agree with that after the three storms we've just had, right? But that has made a significant improvement, and then that had to be on the other side, had to be completely redone, retrenched and everything, to make sure that it, it didn't just take all this water and just flood and cause problem on the other side, so. I think if there is an issue that's further down, I think, I, I agree, there has to be sort of a multi-step sort of question, right? And the first one is, is, is something that's happening on Merrimack's property across the street, is it actually the place that is creating this, or is there some other problem downstream, right? I mean, it's hard to do that after the storm we've just had, or the storms plural, but if this is an ongoing problem, then, you know, I would imagine there'll be a larger conversation about that, right?
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any comments for tonight? Okay, so, we're gonna continue until when?
October 3rd.
October 3rd, okay, continued until October 3rd? Awesome, uh, alright. Meeting, let's do meeting minutes, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 29th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moves. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.